There are, both sides. I apologize. Okay, it's 3:30, folks. City Administrator Spiegel, if you would, yourself and staff, take it away.
Absolutely. Good afternoon. So we skip these for a few years, but I think with kind of a change in council, it's good to do that. Also, our team has changed a fair amount and our departments have gotten, I think, more sophisticated in how we provide services. So I think this will be a good opportunity to refresh on that. So today, we will cover police, fire, development and neighborhood services, and then community and economic development, and then we'll cover the rest of the departments that are under my control next week. So I wanted to set this framework before I hand it over to Chief Sikorski to cover the police departments. We as staff often talk about the governmental roles, and we are the city. We provide local services. And there's, I think, some strain sometimes when another layer of government or one of our, what I'll call sibling governments, be it the schools or the county, isn't performing in a way or providing a service in a way that we do it. And because we are responsive as a city government, and we are closest to our constituents, that we try to fill in that gap sometimes. And so sometimes you may sense me pushing back of, that's not the city's role. From a staff standpoint, it is very important that we deliver our core services, the reason we are here, to serve our citizens. And as we kind of assume those other government areas, it takes away, it's an opportunity cost to us in being able to provide, whether it's public safety or infrastructure or the things that we are here to provide, we have to give something up to take something new on. And so I just wanted to set this as the stage for when we're talking about what our governments, what our government does, and specifically, our city departments do. We take our role very seriously in making sure we deliver the best services in the areas that we're supposed to be providing for our citizens. And I will now turn it over to Chief.
So Chief, one admin note, please. So just to reiterate again, I'll ask, if it's possible, if everybody holds their questions till the presenter is done, and then we'll take the questions in whatever order people want to do them. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Cory. And Mayor, Mayor and Council, thank you very much for the opportunity to represent the Davenport Police Department here and brief you on our core responsibilities. First of all, by way of introduction, I'm Paul Sikorski, your police chief, and I think most of you have met or have dealt with in one way or another Sandy Seaver, the administrative assistant for the Davenport Police Department. And really Sandy, and then the major, and the three captains for the police department, they are really the ones who make things happen within the police department. The assistant chief is Major Jeff Bladel. And then we have, we have our three core service divisions are the services division in that that is led by Captain Jane Eming. Our investigations are led by Captain Brent Biggs, and then our patrol division is led by Captain Jamie Brown. And I think all of you will have information on the budget here. There's one thing that I did want to point out on this particular page, and if you look the second line from the bottom where it says sworn personnel, you'll see the jump from fiscal year 2018 into fiscal year 2019, the additional four staff members, so four police officers that we added. And I would just remind you that that is a partnership with the Bechtel Trust, Davenport Community School District, and the city, giving us those four additional police officers. Two of those officers are school resource officers, and the other two officers are officers that are in our neighborhoods. So there are, when we talk about core services for the police department, we have four areas that I'll brief you over. And that first one is our administrative division. That's the smallest division within the police department. There are four of us, five of us, that work out of that division. The major responsibilities for that division are our internal affairs unit, and that lieutenant really does all the investigations for any complaints that come in. In 2019, there were 86 complaints, and about half of those were internally generated by some of our accountability measures. This year, we're down considerably, and I think as of this morning, we were in the area of 42 complaints. But we also have communications that run out of our administrative division, and also our volunteer and police services. The next two are really our core services, the main functions of our police department. The first one is our patrol division, and again, if you remember, that's run by Captain Jamie Brown. And the patrol division, they are the first face of the police department for our community. If our community needs help in any way, whether it's a 911 emergency call or just a call for service, our patrol officers are the ones that are on the street, arrive at their house or their business or in their neighborhood, and take care of that problem. Last year, the patrol, our whole agency, we functioned about 106,000 calls for service, which is the most I've ever seen here. But I'll tell you, this year, we're down considerably, likely due to the COVID pandemic is probably the reason for that. And the second biggest core function for this police department is investigations. So if you go back to the patrol section, so not only are our patrol officers handling calls for service, but they're doing that initial investigation of a crime committed, and they're also doing follow-up on lower-level crimes or crimes that don't need extensive follow-up. If there's more to it than that, it goes to our criminal investigation division, so our detectives. Our detectives handled about 1,500 investigations last year. And if you talk about one of our core services, the reason it's important to have a strong patrol and investigative functions is, the patrol's obvious. We have to have those officers on the street in our neighborhoods to take care of our community. The investigation part, if you think about the incredible amount of staff hours it takes and people that it takes to investigate major crimes, such as, we've had eight homicides this year. One of those, if you remember, around 4th of July, involved five people getting shot around Third and Myrtle. One of them, one of them passed away from their injuries from that. On that crime scene, there were almost 100 shell casings from shots being fired during that incident. So if you can imagine, that stretched about two to three blocks long. So the incredible amount of number of people and hours that took, one, for the initial response of the incident, two, the evidence collection and data gathered that was necessary to gather from that, but also with the several different victims, witnesses, video gathering, if you can imagine how much that entailed to do all the follow-up that is still ongoing from that incident to this day. That's only one example of the job that those investigators do. As you all know, we have the missing person, Brieja Terrell, and the incredible amount of people and staff time that is still taking to undergo that investigation, the initial onslaught of personnel investigators, as well as staffing that it took for that. Those are just two examples of some of the things that those investigators are charged with. So you can see why it's critical that we have those two areas staffed at an appropriate level so we can handle those services. The support services division is our last core function and service. And the first area of that is our Nets Unit and Crime Prevention Unit. And one of the things that we've, that I have had to do, that we, as a command staff, have really had to, because of staffing challenges and because of the necessity to make sure that we have both patrol and investigations staffed appropriately, we have had to make some difficult decisions about our services function, and we've had to reallocate some of those services and really look at the services function about what we currently do and what we can do. So what we've done in that area is, and it's really created an opportunity for us, because we've been discussing for several years about how do we dial in that Nets and Crime Prevention program? So, you know, it was formed some 12 to 14 years ago, and we really want to dial it in. So what we've done is we've taken all the duties and responsibilities of our Nets officers, as well as the duties and responsibility of our Crime Prevention Officers, and we prioritize those and built it into one functioning unit, which hasn't been rolled out yet, you're hearing it here for the, maybe not the first time, but I hope it's the first time, and creating a community impact team. That team, what you will see in your neighborhoods is very similar to what you see now with our Nets responsibilities, but we're really opening it up citywide. So we have those services, you know, the pushing out the Good Neighborhood Project, which I heard as of last Friday, we were up over 50 neighborhoods now that have joined the Good Neighbor Project. So the core responsibilities that our community impact team are going to have is really going to be the shared responsibility of what we have currently have with our Nets team and what we currently have as our Crime Prevention Team. And just a couple of examples from that Crime Prevention Unit, they do our SEPTED surveys, so the Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design, our Rental Nuisance Program. Those things are key functions that we need to keep going as a police department. So this team will really, we're developing it to have a modernized view of that Nets and Crime Prevention kind of hybrid. So you will see that in the coming months. You will be, we'll have more in-depth conversations, hopefully at ward meetings that you all have, and we're developing a communication strategy for our community with that as well. Also, in our services division, we have our School Resource Officer Program, and again, partnered with the Davenport Community School District. We have our Records Bureau, who processes more than 20,000 police reports a year, and both property and evidence and our civilian evidence technicians. And again, they're bringing in anywhere around 15,000 pieces of evidence a year as well. What's that? Oh, maybe I ran over that. Or NIVEN, and I'll talk a little bit more about that as well, but the NIVEN program, so the National Integrated Ballistic Information Network, that you all actually made possible for us as a police department. And we initiated the Quad City NIVEN Initiative, so all of our law enforcement in the Quad Cities is using this technology. That is also run out of our Support Services Division. So a few frequently asked questions that I wanted to go over with you all. One of them is, why do you let criminals out of jail so easily? And I think all of you probably know that after our initial contact by a person that we, that we put into custody and arrest for any kind of criminal matter, the rest of it is out of our hands. It's not, it's not the police department that has any say in what happens and the disposition of that, of that person. That is our justice system. So that's our court system, and that's administrative policies with the jail as well. Another frequently asked question is, what kind of training is required for your officers? So what I'll tell you is, we, I, as a police chief, and we as a police department, are committed to having a well-trained group of professionals that work as police officers. We require more than 40 hours of training a year, and if you compare that to what the minimum standard for the state is, and that's 12 hours, you can see why we commit our time to training and how much time we commit to training as well. A couple of the things, just examples of some of the things that we train in, we train in the use of force. We train in decision-making when it comes to use of force. We have de-escalation training, ethics training, and implicit bias training, just to name a few. What is DPD doing about rising crime in our city? So while overall crime may be decreasing slightly, the concern for us is that violent crime has increased in this year, in 2020. In 2018 and 2019, we saw significant decreases in crime in our city, as well as significant decreases in violent crime. So what we are doing, one is technology. We talked about NIVEN earlier, so we're using technology to help us. We're also, we have made some staffing changes. I illustrated some of those earlier when we talked about reallocating some of our support services staff to beef up our investigations and patrol staffing. We also created a gun investigation unit within our detective bureau. Their responsibility is shots fired incidents, non-fatal shootings. That's what they had follow-up on. All gun-related incidents and violent crime related to gun, these guys and gals are the ones who do the follow-up investigations for them. They also act a lot on all the leads that are generated through our NIVEN program. We also collaborate extensively with our federal partners, so our partners at the Department of Justice, our U.S. Attorney's Office, all of our federal law enforcement partners, and all of our local law enforcement partners as well. So speaking of partnerships, the one that I want to talk about that overshadows all the other ones that are on here, these are stakeholders that we have up here, but the one that all of you know, our biggest partner is our community. And with our community, it's important for us to act and really create public safety through collaboration with these community partners. Scott County is a partner for us, and as you all know, you know, they're responsible for jailing, mental health, human resources, I'm sorry, human and health, so our homeless population, just as an example. So it's imperative for us to be partners with them so we can develop plans to work on issues within our community that relate to some of these particular items. The judicial system, certainly they're responsible for bond setting, sentencing, pre-trial releases, all of those things, and all of those things have an effect on public safety in our community as well. So they're one of our stakeholders. Juvenile Court Services and Detention, they're responsible for decisions made regarding youth that have entered into the juvenile justice system. So it's important that we work with them on diversion programs. We work on them with other services. I'm going to talk about the, one of the initiatives, the Juvenile Assessment Center here in just a minute, that as well, they're our partners in that. As well as our federal partners, so Public Safety Partnership, Department of Justice, U.S. Attorneys, I'd talk with that a little bit. And social services, we partner with Family Resources, with Scott County Kids, and many more. So just a couple of updates on our work plan for the city administrator. These three areas are, the updates are increasing juvenile support services. So again, your police department, along with city administration, has been working really hard on this concept of a juvenile assessment center and are making progress towards that with many of the stakeholders that I mentioned earlier. And we're going to continue working on that. In fact, we talked about it this morning again. So I mean, it's an ongoing process, and we are making progress on that. The creation of a crime analytics unit. So the police department, we have submitted for a grant for two crime analysts through the Department of Justice. We're waiting to hear a response from that, and with those two, our plan is to launch a new analytics division. And then the Public Safety Partnership. We are in year two of this three-year program. We have completed a crime analysis and a non-fatal shooting investigation assessments. So that's outside eyes, experts from around the country coming here logistically and looking at, how do we do crime analytics? How can we improve in that area? And then they give us recommendations. So we have several recommendations that we're working through. In fact, we, in October here for our full staff meeting, we have, it's planned for a two-hour session with all of our lieutenants, captains, major, and myself, on looking at the assessment from the non-fatal shooting and all of the recommendations that PSP has given us. And then we're going to prioritize that list and figure out which ones do we work on first and which ones can we do. So that is the update for core competencies for your police department. And again, I thank you for your time, and any questions?
Thanks, Chief. Does any council folks, I see Ms. Lee, any questions, please? Or comments, concerns, whatever.
Thank you, Chief. When do you expect the community impact to roll out? And talk to me a little bit about the transition period.
I'm assuming you're talking about the Nets portion?
Between the Nets and the new program.
Yep, so the first, well, actually, the first thing we had to do, we've done several weeks, in fact, a couple of probably months of planning and of how this is actually going to look. But we really wanted to communicate this to all of you first, so you have the information. I talked with Sarah this morning, and now we're developing a communication plan. What I'd really like to do is have a one-page letter that's drawn up, so we can, one, send that information out to our existing, you know, community partners that we have, we have them all over the city, and we want to communicate that way. Then perhaps follow those up with community meetings, follow-up meetings, face-to-face meetings, and I don't know, we'll think of other things, maybe some social media stuff as well to get that information out.
When do you foresee that actually coming into?
Yep, I'm sorry. So November 1st is when we're actually going to make those transitions happen physically.
That's quick.
Yep, absolutely. What's that? Yeah, yeah, so we have to, there's, we have two shift bids and shift changes throughout the year. Our first one in the fall here is November 1st, that's why we're hitting it at that time. Any other?
Oh, goodness.
Mayor Mattson?
Yes, Ms. Alderman McGinnis, please.
Thank you very much. Chief, could you talk about who our partners are in the Juvenile Assessment Center? The city's role and the other roles within that, or how it's envisioned?
Yeah, absolutely. I'll just, I'll talk about the partners first. So I think, I think you know, Alderman McGinnis, we've been working on this for probably two and a half years, almost three years or so. It's been a long process. And part of our stakeholders, so I would say that certainly the city of Davenport is city administration and the police department. I've been working on this since its inception, three years ago or so. The city of Bettendorf, so their police chief and other staff have been involved with it. Scott County has been involved, the Sheriff's Department. We have Juvenile Detention, the director there. We have Juvenile Court Services, so the director of Juvenile Court Services. Family Resources has jumped in here as of late. Our Davenport Community School District is involved with that. We have Judge Trom, who is one of our local judges, who handles a lot of the youth cases. We have the Scott County Attorney's Office. We have a couple of private partners that are on that as well. Am I missing anybody, Sarah? Oh, DHS is on there as well, Department of Human Services. So many different stakeholders. Is there a second part to the question? Want to make sure I got everybody.
Ms. McGinnis, is that good?
That's fine, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I just wanted an overview, again, I forget.
Okay. Alderman Dorman.
Thank you. I just have a few questions here. Typically, what is the level that would get something to switch from patrol trying to investigate to the investigations unit?
Yeah, so there's a lot of different things. And here's the other thing I'll tell you, there's investigations that get referred to our detective bureau that don't get followed up on, because there's so many of them that they can, like, logistically only handle so many. So there are some that we don't even get to touch, and we prioritize by the nature of the crime. So the, you know, homicides are going to get first priority, we jump on those, then anything lesser than that. So I would say, if there's, it depends on witnesses, you know, how many and to the level, the level of the crime, like I had talked about, the cooperation of victims, the cooperation of witnesses involved with it, how extensive a crime scene or a scene might be as well. All of those things can lend to the nature of whether it is handled by patrol or not. The other thing I'll tell you is, there are some major crimes that our patrol officers catch and arrest the person the day or the night that it happens. They will typically do most of the follow-up on that. So I mean, anything from armed robberies to felon in possession of firearms, you know, firearms, shots fired incidents, they will, they can and do often, if they're, if those involve extensive witness interviewing and those kinds of things, especially for A or B felonies, that they will get detectives involved to assist with that as well.
Next question was, just are there requirements for DPD employees to live in particular radius of Davenport or et cetera?
Yeah, we, there is a, there is a residence restriction for our officers, yes.
Is that state mandated or us mandated?
It's locally mandated. It's within Scott County, and then there's a small portion of Muscatine County way on the, but it's a very small portion of it.
Are we allowed to go to Illinois, or do they have to stay?
Our restrictions are, officers have to live in Iowa and Scott County.
Because of us again, or because of the state?
Yes, but those are our restrictions.
So the state changed that two or three years ago for border cities specifically. As we've talked through the years, there's not been an appetite by management or the council to open that up, because you do have a two-year window to move across, and we feel like it's really important to be a member of our community if you're a member of our public safety.
And then the last one, and this might be a loaded question, so feel free not to answer, but is there a root cause of why we're seeing the increase in the violent crime, or is there, you know, that's an alarming trend, and do we know why, or can you even tell why, or is it random and it should go down next year and maybe three years from now go back up?
Yeah, I think, I think right now, it's probably a little early to try and really put a finger on exactly what's causing it. I will tell you that nationwide, that is the trend of violent crime has been increasing in cities around the nation. I think a lot of that probably deals with the social unrest that we've experienced this year, and I think there's probably a lot of, a lot of different reasons for it.
That's all I have, so thank you.
All right. Alderman, Alderman Peacock.
Thank you, Chief. As usual, great presentation on core competencies, and I might comment to those points. What do you see as challenges facing the Davenport Police Department going forward?
Yeah, thank you for that. I think one of the biggest ones, Alderman Peacock, are staffing challenges. We, I think hiring and retention are, is one of the biggest challenges that we have right here in Davenport. It is, again, it's a trend throughout our country right now, and right here, we have lost people already because of the climate of policing, and I anticipate we will lose, you know, a handful more of good qualified officers that have just, that are going to make the decision that, you know, the risks of this and the climate just outweigh the benefits for it and go into different professions. And so the recruitment is really, really difficult right now. We're experiencing that, we're going through recruitment, and retention is a difficult one as well. I would tell you, another challenge for us is community relations. Community relations is big when we talk about police reform, when we talk about just getting people to maybe understand police work a little better, and police officers to understand our community a little bit better, that working relationship. One of the things I talked about at the beginning of the presentation, when we talked about stakeholders, you know, our biggest partner is our community, and our community has to trust us. And that, and we need to build that trust, so that, you know, that's, that's one of our big challenges. And then Alderman Dorman brought it up, you know, violent crime, violent crime and gun crime here, that is a challenge for us. Youth being involved in the, in the justice system, or getting involved in, that is a challenge for us. And that's why it's really critical for us to work with all those stakeholders that I talked about.
One more. Earlier in the year, you talked about it transforming or adding people to the analytics department, trying to get, you know, futuristic. How does that play a role, and how do you foresee that helping you in the future?
Well, I think, I'll give you, just in general, it's trying to be smarter with the limited resources that we have. So if we have two crime analysts, ideally, what I would love to do is have one of them assigned to the patrol division. assigned to the patrol division, one of them assigned to investigations. They can transform all the data that's being put into our records management system and give us ideas of where in our city, for, for a patrol perspective, we're having the most problems with shots fired or with burglaries or with robberies. And we're able to concentrate our resources more in those area and we're able to develop who is, is likely responsible for those as well. Specific people who either we know have been involved in these crimes previously or have been stopped perhaps on traffic stops in, in areas where we're experiencing that. So many different things, but that's kind of what we're looking at, is to be smarter with our resources.
Thank you. Alderman Jopian.
Thank you. Then along that lines, Chief, do you envision or, or what are requests of us as an elected body from a policy standpoint to help, you know, achieve, you know, achieve some of these, these goals, excuse me, goals you're looking towards or overcome some of the obstacles which, which we just discussed? What do you need from us?
Well, I think, just to start off, you all have been very supportive of our, of our police department and public safety since I've been here. And, and that is greatly appreciated. The men and women of the, of your police department need your support, they need your outward support because times are difficult right now. They, but they need to know from you that they're supported. I tell them often, but I can tell you as, as the police chief, I'm certainly into the council meetings and, you know, I'm here every, every week. I think it's important for me and I relay information to them. But I could tell you, when I was working the street as a patrol officer, when I was investigator, I don't think I ever came to council unless there was some kind of a presentation that I had to, you know, be, be part of. So I think it's important if they can hear from you in one way or another. I know several of you just walked through when, when we were conducting the, you know, we had, we had that big operations center for our, our dearest Briazia that's, that's missing. And just, I think seeing you and, and hearing from you helps with that. And the other thing is, I think you've been very supportive also when, when we had requests, when we requested that NIB and it was difficult to, 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 that's a big expense, $400,000 for the city to really not concentrate just on Davenport but on the Quad Cities. So when we have things like that, all I ask is that you listen and trust that we don't come to you often for, for things, but when we do, it's something that we really need.
Good. Alderman Ambrose.
Thanks, Your Honor.
Yeah, Chief, great presentation. I, I think you've hit on everything pretty solid. You know, if I had the opportunity, I'd like to highlight on all those issues, but council, the mayor, and you know where I'm coming from. I think our police department is in a crisis right now for what's going on in our community. And I think the chief did a great job explaining it. But as we sit here as aldermen and mayor, and we allow people to come into this chamber and speak hatefully of our police department and our great city, you know, that's, that's a horrible message when the council allows that to happen. And the chief talked about the 4th of July shooting and, you know, they're still investigating that, but sadly, we have the same shootings three, four times a week. So the investigators, they're still working on the 4th of July. And at the same time, we've had three or four shootings every week. So the crisis is in manpower, the crisis is in customer service. You know, those victims, because of the staffing challenges, you know, they're not having the opportunity to be taken care of, whereas the stinking criminals, because of our pathetic justice system, continue to be dumped in our community and our neighborhoods. And we listened to the Supreme Court Justice talk about-
Mr. Ambrose, do you have a, do you have a question?
Yeah.
Okay. I'd love you to get to the question.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd love a little more support from the city council and mayor on what's going on. But you want to know why we have these problems, Alderman Dorman? You know, they talk about how happy they are because the prison population is at the slowest in history, modern history, because they've all been put back in our neighborhood. You know, the courts, court system, juvenile criminals have been held accountable, you know, they just put a bracelet on them, send them back in our community. And then we allow these people to come in to a city council chamber and speak hatefully about our police department. You know, that's got to stop. You know, we got to rally behind our police department and our great city. I've worked too hard for too long to make Davenport some America's greatest city. And I look at the last nine months, and I'm pretty disgusted about what's been going on.
Mr. Ambrose, do you have a question?
That's good enough.
Thank you. Mr., I apologize. Alderman Condon.
Thank you. Chief, hearing that retention is a challenge is kind of eye-opening. And I always think of being in policing as more of a calling, sort of like being a teacher. I was just curious what you would say to an individual who is weighing the pros and cons of, you know, the risks and rewards like you spoke of, of, of a career in the police force?
Yeah, I would, what I would talk to them about is my personal experiences. And you're right, it is a calling and it's, and it's, and it's got to be in your heart. This isn't a job. It's a, it's a profession and you have to treat it as that. This profession has been amazing to me and my family, but it does come with challenges. And it comes with challenges that are greater than me. You know, my family certain, certainly has challenges as well. But I also have the opportunity to have an effect on safety in my community, my hometown. And, and, you know, to, to just have the opportunity to maybe have a positive effect on that is worth it for me. And, and really it has to be as simple as that. That you're put in a position where you have the opportunity to really make a difference in your community. And it could be with a single person, which has happened many times. But to have an effect on, on public safety in a, in a community like this, that's, that's why you accept the challenge of being a police officer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You have another question? I want, please.
Thank you. Following up on Alderman Peacock, I really like the idea, the crime analytics department. You said it's coming in at a grant. How long is that grant going to be? And then what happens when the grant runs out?
Yep, so the grant is a three-year, if we get it, yeah, so we're supposed to find out-
Last Wednesday.
Last Wednesday. But nobody has found out yet, is my understanding, so. So yeah, and, and if we get this grant, it's a, it's a three-year grant. So again, that's a, the, how that continues on after that, it's a, it's a strategy that, that we're working with city administration on.
And one other question, please?
One more.
Yep. We've talked before about the importance of communication out to the community of the things that you're doing. And I don't really agree with cutting off public involvement at our community, at our city council meetings or whatever, because I think on the whole, people have been respectful. But I think we need to do a better job of communicating the types of training, the programs you have out to the community so that they are aware. You know, you can look at nationally or state level, and that's where people, I think, are getting a lot of their information. But we need to talk about what's happening here in Davenport by the police department that you are leading and I think doing a very excellent job, especially with the outreach to the, the partnerships that you've been developing and have been growing. I think that's really important and I think working perhaps with one of our organizations might-
Thank you.
What'd I do? But, but working with communication organizations to get that information out to the public and community would go a long ways.
So I know that wasn't a question, but what I will tell you is that on our, we formed a Scott County and Community Policing Reform Group three months ago, maybe, as part of the, the unrest and the thing, and the tragedy that happened in Minneapolis. And we've been working with that group since. Oh, one of the, one of our action items is exactly that. It's a communication strategy and it's several different points that we will be putting together some communication on with our community partners. So community partners and law enforcement and city delivering messages about policing here in Scott County.
Thank you.
So thank you for that.
Thank you. Anyone else? Alderman McGinnis, did you have another comment or just oops?
No, I'm fine.
Good. Thank you, so Chief, I'll just give one quick comment. Please give your thanks to all the work, hard work and dedication and sacrifice your officers do every day for the safety of this, this city. We appreciate it, we applaud it. And anytime you think there's a concern, please bring it to this body to make us aware and see what we can do and, and thank you for your work. So Ms. Beagle, next, please.
I will, thank you.
Good afternoon. Mike Carleston, Fire Chief. Am I on? Okay. I couldn't hear the feedback like I could out there, so. Anyway, as the slide says, I'm Chief Mike Carleston. This is my office number up there. Tabitha Rush has been with the city for quite a few years. She worked with the police department. And then our administrative assistant retired about two years ago and Tabitha transferred over to the fire department. Our two assistant chiefs, and they're here with us today. Chief Jim Morris, he is our Fire Marshal, and Chief Rob McDougall is our Operations Chief. The Fire Marshal works mainly in a lot of things with the outside contacts with the Fire Department. He looks at our internal affairs, he looks at any fire plans that come in for new businesses in town, does a lot of our inspections, oversees our inspections department. He also oversees the department's training division, the hazmat division, and the investigation division. Chief Rob McDougall as operations, he oversees our personnel, our apparatus fleet and our facilities that we have. And he also kind of keeps our policies that we have in the department up to date and we want to make sure that they're current with where we at in today's world. Just some of the basic overalls of the department. As you can see, a lot of our expenses are related to employee expenses up there. And we are at 136 firefighter, or 135 firefighters with our one civilian, that one civilian is Tabitha. A little bit of what we do, and these are based off 2019 numbers. Our calls for service in 2019 were 16,700 calls. About two to three years ago, the Fire Department with cooperation of SEC, Scott County Emergency Communication, we went ahead and started Priority Dispatch. At one time, our numbers were up to about 19,000. But after we started the Priority Dispatch, they bounced down to about 16,000, but they still are increasing about 500 calls per year. When we checked here just recently, we're on pace to be over 17,000 calls for service this year. Out of those calls in 2019, 2% of them were fire-related calls and 77% were EMS-related. And so the EMS-related included your EMS calls that we go to, but also the lift assists that we have and some other EMS-related, sometimes we go and just help people in their home and they're not transported to the hospital. Another, and the incident response is usually when you think of the Fire Department, that's usually what people think that we actually do. But there's a lot of things that are done on a day-to-day basis, that are done behind the scenes that nobody actually sees. Our inspections, we have quite a robust inspection program. We perform annual commercial business inspections. With our commercial business inspections, they are done by our frontline firefighters. So the companies actually go out, perform these inspections, and they look at about 3,800 businesses within Davenport. On top of those inspections, we also have our eight-hour personnel that work directly underneath the Fire Marshal that will conduct anything from a food truck inspection to a fireworks sales inspection to a hazardous material inspection to see how many hazardous materials they actually have on site. And so we do perform quite a few inspections on a day-to-day basis. The investigation aspect, again, is overseen by our Fire Marshal. And in 2019, we had a total of 144 investigations. Every fire that we have in the city of Davenport, we need to document and investigate. Some of them are pretty simple and some of them get to be quite complex. We have about 23 individuals who are specially trained to do that. Eight of them are actually arson investigators. And as an arson investigator, you are a firefighter, but you have police powers and training. With that, police powers and training, if this happens to go down a criminal pathway, they can go ahead and work hand-in-hand with our local police department and also with the Scott County Attorney's Office that we can go ahead and prosecute these crimes as needed. We also have a robust public education and prevention. We spend a lot of our time and effort in education and prevention because if we know that we can do something to stop a tragedy from someone, then we've made their life a lot better. By the time we have to go to the response mode, it's going to have a negative effect on someone's life most likely. So with that, oh, go back real quick. With that, we had about 15,000 public interactions. That's everything from our smokehouse out to fair to the 38 school talks that we went to, schools and daycares, to fire extinguisher classes, tours of the fire station. We try to do quite a bit with the public education and prevention. Unfortunately, this year, we've been a little bit slow, COVID's really locked down our buildings, and so we haven't had those contacts this year. Some of the frequently asked questions. When someone calls 911 for EMS call, why does a fire truck show up? Of our 135 firefighters, 65 more are paramedic level. They are trained to the same level as the paramedics that ride on medic EMS. With us being able to get there in a timely fashion, we have seven fire stations throughout the city. We try to get there so we can start intervening in patient care. The sooner that we can start patient care, the greater the likelihood that we're going to have a positive outcome with that patient. So time is critical when we do that. That's why we make sure that we send police and fire on those emergency calls that deem that we need to have both. I'm sorry, medic and fire. Why do we bring fire apparatus to inspections? Again, these are done by the personnel that are working their 24-hour shifts. But part of the reason that they're the ones doing these inspections, it's a great training opportunity. One, we want to make sure we go through the inspection, we look for fire hazards, life safety hazards, anything that we can do to make sure we keep that business in business for the long term. We don't want to have some sort of event take them out of business. And also it gives our men and women an opportunity to actually get into the business during daylight hours with someone from the business to walk us through, identify hazards, point out access points into the building, give us a layout of the facility and let us know where utility shut-offs are. How much does it cost for the Fire Department? We do not charge for most of our responses. Most of our responses are paid through the taxpayers' funding that we have. There is a couple exceptions. If we have excessive false alarms, there is a city ordinance that allows us to charge for that. And if we have a hazardous material incident within our community and you do not have a permit, we can go ahead and charge for services there. Can I burn leaves in my backyard or have a recreational fire? This is a yes and no. No, you cannot burn leaves, you cannot burn grass, you cannot burn garbage, you cannot burn construction material. This is all set by the city ordinance. But the city ordinance does outline where you can have a recreational fire. A recreational fire and cooking fires are allowable. There are some restrictions with that. Your recreational fire must be kept small, less than four foot high. It's got to be at least 25 feet away from any other structure or exposure. It has to be tended by a competent person at all times, an adult, someone who can actually put the fire out. And it also has to have some method of extinguishment, whether it's an extinguisher or a garden hose nearby. So if things start to flare up a little bit, we could go ahead and control that. And it cannot be on public property. So some of the partnerships that the Davenport Fire Department has is one, medic EMS. And even though fire and medic respond to the same 911 calls, medic is the agency that actually transports the patients to the hospital. If we do have a patient that's critical, the Fire Department will ride along, give an extra hand, and we do have seasoned paramedics that will actually help with patient care till we get there. We also have partnerships with all the fire departments in the region, but we have an automatic agreement with Bettendorf Fire. And we started that about a year and a half ago. This has been very beneficial for both communities. very beneficial for both communities. And at structure fires only, if there is a structure fire in either one of the communities, we share resources so we could get resources there as quick as possible to extinguish the fire. Um, we also have a lot of partnerships when it comes to our hazmat. Our hazmat team not only responds to the city of Davenport, but we're responsible for the hazmat coverage for the western portion of Scott County. And we also offer coverage to Clinton and Jackson County as a regional hazmat response team. In addition to that, we're also part of the state's hazmat task force. So, if something occurs in the state, they can lean on Davenport to help out when it comes to a hazardous material situation. And we're also part of the weapons of mass destruction team for the state. Another one of our partnerships is through SEC. They're responsible for our radio dispatching, uh, and the radio system. And you may have heard that right now, we are in the middle of building out a new radio system for public safety for Scott County and Rock Island County. And SEC is the lead on that. And police and fire are partners as we move forward with that project. And another one of our partnerships is Iowa American Water. Um, the hydrants out there are not city of Davenport hydrants. They are hydrants from Iowa American Water. They are responsible for maintaining the hydrants. They, uh, test the hydrants annually for us. And we have an agreement that when needed, we could go ahead and use the hydrants for emergencies in our community. Things that are working on here in the near future, um, or that have just happened, uh, the Station 3 property. Um, the matrix study that came along about two years ago identified that Station 3 was in a poor location. Um, it was in a good location when the station was originally built. Uh, they've changed traffic patterns over the years. The Duck Creek floodplain has expanded. With that being said, we needed to get that station out of there. An opportunity came that we were able to move it up to 4,200 Brady. The property came available. Uh, the city has already purchased that property, and we're looking to move forward to, uh, build a station in the near future. Right now, we are currently working on relocating our training center. Our training center was located out at the old Wacky Watersite. It's a partnership with, uh, Eastern Iowa Community College. Um, the property was sold. Uh, and when it was sold, we were losing our training props. So, to make sure that we maintain our training props, we were able to work on a site, found a site of Public Works, we're moving the props out there. And some big news that we've had is, over the last year, we have received two new engines. Um, one is in the northeast part of town. One is in the northwest part of town. And we have received our new 100-foot aerial. Um, in the spring, summertime, we should be getting another engine. Uh, so, we're doing pretty good by keeping up on our fleet maintenance. Um, really appreciate the support of the council as we move forward with that. And with that, I would entertain any questions of the fire department.
Thank you. Alderman Peacock.
Thank you so very much, uh, Chief. And you really answered my very first question, because I took the tour of the fire department. And one of the things you talked about was fleet maintenance and, uh, how hard it is to keep those, those vehicles up and running. Do you foresee that as an enduring issue? Because, of course, you receive new engines, but, you know, two, three years down the road, do you foresee coming back to the city council and, and asking for more engines? Is that part of your grand scheme, and think you need to improve your fleet maintenance?
Uh, we've worked with the city staff, and as part of the, uh, capital improvement projects, we're trying to stay on top of that so we can constantly have that rotating of fire engines and fire trucks as needed. Um, we did fall a little bit behind. Uh, two administrations before was able to secure a deal where we had six all at once. Um, it's not really realistic to buy six fire trucks all at once in nowadays. So, with that, we're just trying to work out a schedule that's good fiscally, and also that's good for the department to just constantly keep that rotation going through so we don't fall behind. We're in a good position right now, and we're just continuing to work the plan that's already been put in place.
And one other thing is, uh, I know you and I, and Will as the police chief, we always have conversations. And you just heard the chief, police chief, talk about, you know, challenges to the police department. And I'm quite sure you're going to probably mention one of some of the challenges to the fire department. I know you're going to probably mention, uh, recruitment and retention. But, you know, is there any other things precise that council can address?
Uh, for the council to address at this time, I really don't see anything, uh, similar, like the chief said, uh, staffing is one of those issues that we run into. And firefighting is a physically challenging job. Um, as individuals start to get a little bit older, we beat up on their bodies a little bit. And so, just making sure that we have people to continue to do their job. But if, I appreciate the support of the council. The council's been great. Um, we looked at, you know, the fleet replacement schedule. We looked at the new Station 3, and we really appreciate the support of the council. At this time, I can't think of anything that I need from the council.
Thank you. Alderman Jobson.
Thank you. Uh, probably a simple question for you, Chief. So, tis the time of year. Um, people wanting to burn their leaves, and, you know, we just had our big storm. So, what's the recommendation for us as council members when we get that email or call from a constituent that says, hey, my neighbor's burning something? What do I do?
Well, if someone is burning something, we do have a burn line, uh, 3267904. That is changed daily. Um, there are certain conditions where you can burn limbs and tree branches on your property, but burning leaves is never the opportunity. I know Public Works has some free leaf pickup coming up here end of October, in November.
Yep.
So, that would be my suggestion at this time, is, uh, work with Public Works, or go ahead and bag them and, uh, get a sticker.
When's it appropriate to call 911?
Excuse me?
When's it appropriate to call 911?
You can call 911 anytime you have a question. Um, you know, if there's a problem, we'll go ahead and sort it out the best way possible. Uh, we would rather people would call, and we went back home, rather than have a concern about anything at all. So, when in doubt, I always tell people to call 911, um, whether it's EMS, fire-related, or you're just not quite sure, you know, your police and fire departments are there to help the community. And we'll, we'll make sure we do what's appropriate.
Thank you. Alderman Lee.
Thank you, Chief. I'm interested in the hazmat regional response team.
Mm-hmm.
Do you folks do the, um, actual facility surveys, looking for hazardous materials that are being stored at certain commercial establishments, let's say? Because that's required by federal law. Do you actually go through and do?
Just within the city of Davenport?
Yes.
Just in the city of Davenport, our hazmat officer, and then when the rest of our crews are out doing their commercial business inspections, if they find something that's questionable that, that, that does not have a hazmat fee, they'll notify our hazmat officer, and he'll go out and follow up with them. So, yes, we try to keep that on record.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Don.
Thank you, Mike. Um, so, when you talked about the priority call change and how it dropped down like 3,000-ish calls, could you just explain what that priority call is or how that worked?
What they did is, and it was a partnership between fire department and medic and the dispatch system. And we went through each individual call type and figured out, was this really a reason to send a fire truck and a medic ambulance down the street, hot with lights and sirens? Some of those, we went ahead and divided, and we made them into cold responses for either agency. Some of them, we decided both agencies don't need to go. So, there's certain call types that only the ambulance will go. There's certain call types that only the fire department will go. And we tried to reduce the workload a little bit. We do have monthly meetings with all three partners just to follow up on this and to check the progress. And this is a Scott County, not just a Davenport thing.
Uh, next question is then related to the inspections that your team does. What's the partnership with, uh, Rich's team and his, like, neighborhood inspections? And do you guys overlap any or partner?
I know that they work closely hand-in-hand. Um, and I think our fire marshal may be able to give you a little bit better answer for that, because our fire marshal is the one that works closely with Rich.
Jim Morris, Fire Marshal, for those of you who don't know me. Uh, we do work hand-in-hand with Neighborhood Services Division. Uh, there's a lot of properties out there, uh, that I run into that are on the rental side of things. And we primarily handle, uh, the commercial for, for fire code enforcement. But there are some times that we cross over to each other, and I will contact Rich or one of his inspectors, uh, to go with me. And that way, we can kind of kill two birds with one stone, uh, due to the fact that it kind of enters both, uh, both of our lanes.
Thank you. Um, and then my next one is with hazmat. Uh, and this actually might be more from Mowery, but, uh, with that, when we do hazmat stuff, or even other, like the Bettendorf partnership, do we charge back any of our time or resources for doing that? Or is it, um, just known that we're here to help everyone and?
As far as automatic aid, there is no financial exchange between either community. Um, we, what we did is, before we established the boundaries, we basically looked at an average three to five year of call for call. So, we're trying to receive as much as we're giving and just have that reciprocal agreement. As far as the hazmat, the hazmat is just enough to recoup our expenses. We are not making any money off of that. Um, if you're in the city of Davenport, and you pay your hazardous material fee or your permit, then if you have an event there, we already have your inventory. We know what's going on. We have a pre-plan established for that facility. You likely would not get a bill for that. Now, if you were transporting that product down the street, you did not have a hazardous material permit for the city of Davenport, we responded. We would go ahead and bill back for materials and man-hours that we used on that, not to make a profit on it, but just to recover the expenses that we had involved so that we'd be prepared for the next one.
So, then if you had to go up to, like, Clinton County or out in rural Scott County, would you charge back for that? Or is that a different?
Usually, we charge back when we go outside the county. And again, this is a partnership. We do not go, if we go into, uh, Clinton or Jackson County, we do not assume command of that scene. It's the local jurisdiction. We're just there to work for the technical aspect underneath the local jurisdiction.
Okay. That's, I, I understand it better now. But, uh, the last question I have is that, uh, I know firefighters are known for their, uh, mustaches, and that being the only facial hair you have. And now that I'm trying to grow mine out, can, uh, we challenge you guys in the police department in Movember coming up? We already have some good mustaches here, and I feel like we can get more growing.
I personally am not a good mustache guy, so, uh, you may not want to see that. And our guys cannot do the beard aspect of it. But, um, we'd be more than happy to have a conversation with you.
I'd like to see it. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Ambrose.
Thanks, Your Honor. Great presentation, Chief. Uh, you know, Davenport's so fortunate to have a great fire department like what we have. And we also probably have the greatest fire station, Station 6, in the country. So, I just want you to say how much, tell the guys up at Station 6 and the ladies that, you know, people in fourth ward are very fortunate to have a great fire station. Uh, what does lift assist?
A lift assist would be, um, they tend to be some of our, uh, elderly in the community. Um, they just, they can take care of themselves for the most part. Someone has fallen, and maybe their wife, husband, is not able to get them up off the floor. And all they need is just get lifted back on their feet. Um, so, a lot of times, it's just helping someone up, just getting them so that they can get their feet underneath them. There's no medical problem. They just didn't have the strength to move up off the floor for, by themselves. Once you get them up, sometimes it's a, a single event. Other times, we see it happen time and time again. If we see it too often, we get social services in there to help.
All right. Hey, that, that's great. And I wanted to thank Station 6, because they're very conscientious about their sirens. Whereas, medic, those guys and gals really like to lay on those sirens at night. Can you have a talk to them about that?
Uh, I'll, I'll pass your, uh, comments along. But we, we, we understand that we want to do what's best for the community, but we give them a little bit of, uh, judgment to do what's best for the time of day.
Thanks, Chief. Good job.
Anyone else? Alderman McGinnis, do you have anything?
Okay. I'll take that. All right. So, I just want to say thank you again, um, Chief, and pass on to your folks that we all thank you in the work and dedication and sacrifice that you provide. And I just want to add a little bit during the pandemic, uh, both our police and fire, and quite frankly, all of our departments go about their business and have gone about their business out in the community, dealing with whatever they need. When somebody calls, we ask, even during this major event where we tell people to stay home, uh, you guys go when they, when they're called. And then we have to remember to say that those, both departments, fire and police, are nationally accredited and have been nationally accredited and continue to be nationally accredited, and have eyes come from outside that evaluate you every year, and then, and then specifically in in-depth, uh, evaluation, uh, onsite every couple of years. And you continue to excel and, and set the standard, quite frankly, both the police department and fire department for other departments around the nation, because of your accreditation and the work and dedication and the foresight to, um, look into the future and see what you need. So, I applaud you both. And, uh, again, thank you for all your work. So, Ms. Beagle, next, please.
I'm going to do a quick intro as Rich heads up. Um, this one was a little bit of a leap of faith with a previous council in codifying the first new department in many, many years. Um, and under Rich's guidance for now three years, right? Um, it has evolved tremendously. And, and you'll see that, we'll probably spend a little more time on the budget slide and his department than any others, because it changes year over year pretty significantly as we add services that fit more holistically in what we're trying to achieve with this service delivery area. Um, but I think Rich will dazzle you with how much progress, um, this specific department's made in what is a very short period of time in the land of city government.
All right. So, I will dazzle you, but I will not keep you super long, because I watched my team unfortunately lose last night. And there may be some fans with the Monday Night Football game tonight that want to get home to at 5:30. So, we'll try to make this quick.
Championship team.
Or a football team. Uh, so, I am Rich Oswald. I am the Director of Development and Neighborhood Services. Um, one, one person, Hillary Bells, who you don't see often, she's my administrative assistant. I know some of you have worked with her. She is amazing. She actually hired him the same time I did as a clerk, and, uh, has grown with me and, and coming along. And a lot of our, our movement through our processes is directly related to her, her presence and her ability to really look at data and sort of tell us where we need to go and what we're doing. So, she's been a great asset. Um, also, part of my staff is Tricia Perron. She's our chief building official. Um, some of you that have been on council for a while, remember Mike McGee. She was Mike's replacement. Um, pretty big shoes to fill. Mike was here for a long time. She's been doing a fabulous job with our building department and sort of involving that into technology. We, up until COVID, only did paper permit applications. So, if you wanted a permit, you had to come to the counter and, and get that permit. And it was sort of tedious and, uh, made it hard for our contractors and our homeowners to get stuff done. We have now evolved. We can get permits online. We're still building out that system. Um, COVID was a nice, uh, push-off-the-ledge type of thing with permitting. And then also, that little hailstorm really made the need for permits during COVID sort of, uh, speed up there. So, and then Laura Berkley's, um, has brought development and planning to us in Neighborhood Services. Uh, she worked in CPED, uh, for many years, and before that was at Bi-State. So, she comes with us a lot of planning experience. And then Dan Guy is sort of one of my unsung heroes. Will do anything you ask him to do at any time. Will do anything any department asks him to do and try to be a very helpful person. He is actually our code enforcement supervisor, but he's really been dedicated to the parking ramps. Um, he has three part-time ambassadors that work for him that do the ticketing. And then they also, up until our recent agreement with DDP, was in charge for the cleaning and the facilities down there. And it was a pretty large task for, for people to do. And we've seen, we see some improvement with DDP. Unfortunately, with sort of our vacated parking ramps, right now, we have some other issues we're working through, but we see that moving along in the future. And with DDP coming on board, um, Dan brings a lot of years of code enforcement knowledge and in the rental part of it. So, he'll be able to come and help mentor some of our younger staff members and sort of help me out with the day-to-day with our code enforcement inspectors. So, we're looking forward to that change. So, for our budget, I don't know if Cory wants to interject anymore, but you see a significant growth over the couple, three years. And obviously, that's adding building and, uh, development and planning to that. And we also have one new, uh, code enforcement officer that we're in the process of hiring now. Um, so, that growth has sort of been a combination of departments. And then, um, what we see that's the need for another code one enforcement officer to help with some of our more day-to-day type nuisance issues. Okay. Uh, so, one of our biggest things we do in our department is our rental property management. Um, for those of you who don't know or haven't been, we have about 7,600 rental properties. So, those are just physical addresses. In those, um, 7,600 properties, we have about 17,000 rental units. So, that's individual rental units. We have everything from a single-family rental up to, you know, 120plex unit, something with 120 units in it. So, those are on a rental inspection cycle, so two, three, or four years, they're required to be inspected by our department. And we'll go out and do those inspections. On average, we're doing about 3,500 rental inspections a year. So, that's sort of the, a lot of our inspections fall in that three-year bucket. So, we see a lot of those. And then, um, our two-year is sort of our, our rentals that need a little more attention from our staff. We used to have a one-year inspection, but we were just always taking, it took longer than a year to get them where they need to be, or it was just, we were going back there so frequently, we were, we were losing focus on some of our other ones. So, we, when we- ones. So we, when we re-change the rental code, we went to the three certifications. We've seen, seen that working very well. As far as property inspections, so we did about 10,800 inspections in 2019. When I came on board, sort of the way they were doing it in the past, they were averaging about 5,000 property inspections a year. So we've seen almost double that. Really where we've seen that turnaround is our inspectors would only go to the complaints. So if you called in a complaint on a property, the inspector would go and only address that property. So they wouldn't address any property surrounding it. It would be that specific property. Now, when our inspectors go out, they're looking sort of say alley, street blocks, face. They're looking at multiple properties in that same area. Usually what we find is who's ever complaining about one property probably has some issues on their own. And so we can address them all, which reduces in some of the nuisance complaint where you just want to call something on your neighbor, but your property is not up to par either. So we've seen some reduction of that. We can actually focus on the properties we need to. Obviously, one of our bigger things that we always address is weed abatements or tall grass. It's probably the majority of the calls we get from citizen complaints. But we do about 2,100 grass inspections. And then of that, we abate about half of those. So about 1,100 properties were cut by the city and then built back to that homeowner. In our building department, so we're seeing some change. In fiscal year 19, we had about 6,000 total building permits pulled. And then in 20, we saw 7,900. Obviously, that growth was in our roofs. We saw 2,600 roof permits after the hailstorm. So if you're wondering how many people got a new roof in Davenport, it was about 2,600. What we're seeing, we're still seeing them trickle in too, but the majority of those came during that COVID time. Our biggest growth, and if you're looking at growth over a two-year period, we've seen about 90 new commercial starts, so new, new commercial buildings coming in. And we've seen about 130 new home starts. So where our permits lie. Our staff is, we have a staff of five inspectors. So we have a plumbing inspector, an electrical, a plumbing, and then we have a couple multi-tender inspectors which are doing building and plumbing. So of those five, they're handling the inspections on those permits that are pulled. So they're physically going out in the field, making sure things are done right. We do normally on roofs or windows or sightings, we may not inspect them all, but we'll just inspect a percentage of them from that contractor to make sure they're doing what they're supposed to be doing. But anything new building or commercial, we're heavily involved in those inspections. It's sort of our, with the new permitting system, and actually, our inspectors are now on iPad. So they used to go out in the field, handwrite their notes, come back in the office, and then input their notes. Now, they're doing that all out in the field. We got, we're in Cartograph now, which is the same thing our, our code enforcement guys work with. So it's really sped up the inspection process and also the ability to see what's going on in that property. That way, our code enforcement guys can see, hey, are there permits here? Should there be work being done? And we're starting to catch a lot of unpermitted work. So we're seeing that and make sure that stuff's getting inspected. Planning and zoning, sort of our new area. In planning zoning, I look sort of at a couple-year average back when they were in Bruce's department, but on average, they handle about 650 cases. And when I say cases, that's anything going to P and Z zoning board or design review. They're working with the resident or the contractor and getting them ready to go to those different boards for hearings. Or they're just working with those people saying, yep, you're good to go. We don't need to go to zoning or planning. They're just handling that caseload for development. Or even simple questions of when somebody comes in, they want to add onto their home or they want to add on their building. Can they do it? How big can they go? Where does that, where does that sit? Some of the different supporting roles we do for those boards would be for P and Z, the zoning board, design review board. And just for you to know, design review board is reviewing aesthetic plans for any property that falls downtown or in the East Village or Elmore corridors. So those, if you're looking to change a building or design a building in that area, that must go in front of that design review board. And then also HPC for historic planning. So if you're looking to remodel or do any work on a historic home, you have to go in front of that board and be heard. The biggest thing we've really stepped up in this is what we call our E-Plan review. So any, any type of activity that involves construction has to be submitted through our E-Plan process. So basically, the establishment of E-Plan was to make sure that natural resources, engineering, planning, zoning, and building, we're all looking at the plans. And before the contractor started, everything was approved. We had some gaps in that. There was no real coordinator with bringing Laura in and bringing planning in. Now she is the coordinator, so she's sort of the one point of contact. If we get a pretty significant building plan coming in, she can actually call a meeting. They meet regularly, but we can call that developer in and sit down with them and better understand what they're looking to do or their timeframe. We got a lot of feedback that sometimes our review process was too slow. They wanted to get started quicker, or they weren't understanding the submittal process or the denial. So by them meeting now and being able to bring the contractors in, we're speeding up that process. And we're seeing improvements. And even we've gotten some good results, you know, compliments for some of the builders that have said, hey, this process is a lot easier than the last time I came through. So really, it's just that one point of contact that makes it sort of work better for everyone. Some of our questions, and probably the biggest question we get is, do we evict tenants in neighborhood services, our code enforcement guys? We do not evict anybody that's not part of our persona. We, what we do is we vacate an unsafe building. So if the building rental unit is unsafe or shouldn't be occupied, we'll order it, vacate it. And then obviously, if you do continue to vacate that, you could be fined or charged. Or if we go far enough, you can be charged with trespassing a vacated building. So we vacate, we do not evict. And then the other one is, if you're having an issue with my neighbor, can you fix the problem for me? So we do not settle civil disagreements. So if you have a property line dispute, or you just don't like the way your neighbor's acting, we cannot help in that. That's something we can't do. If they're collecting garbage, they're not taking care of their property, we'll work with them and try to do that. And the other thing we do try to do between neighbors is mediate that issue. So sometimes it's just us being the conduit between the two neighbors who refuse to talk to each other. And I think, as we know in society, and I think a good thing of the Good Neighbor Project is we've stopped talking to our neighbors, right? We ask people all the time, well, have you talked to your neighbor about it? And they said, oh, they've lived there six years. I never talked to them. And it's simply getting two people together to talk through what they're trying to do or what they want to do. Or even, I think my favorite story on this is we had a lady who called in a grass complaint constantly about her neighbor. He was an elderly man, couldn't get a contractor come cut the grass. Her son was 15 and looking for extra pocket money. Just getting them to talk, he started cutting the grass. So that's sort of, you know, those are the things we deal with, with trying to mediate those issues. And then we've done a couple where we've bought in an actual mediation team and sat through those meetings to try and resolve some issues. Some of our partnerships, one of our biggest one, I know most of the partnerships for the other departments will be outside agencies. But for us, it's our Solid Waste Division is probably our biggest one. When we're doing debris cleanups or debris notices, we have to work hand-in-hand with them based on staffing or what's going on and make sure we can get those cleaned up timely. We usually try to do a 10-day letter on debris in a yard, but if it's in the right of way or an emergency, we'll do immediate or 24-hour notices. So we really need to work hand-in-hand with Solid Waste to sort of make sure they know what's coming down our pipeline as far as outstanding notice and orders for debris to make sure they're staffed appropriately and we can get those cleaned up. One of our biggest things is we've worked with the Solid Waste Supervisors to be able to start doing some 24-hour posting on garbage cart setouts or garbage. So when their drivers are calling in and saying something's set out, their supervisors can get that tag put up right away. And then we're getting back there the next day to get that clean. They're not waiting for an NSD inspector to get out there and get that tag. They can get it done quicker. Scott County Health Department, we get a lot of complaints or a lot of calls from them on housing issues or rental issues. But in turn, we also reach out to them a lot when we have a hoarding, a hoarding situation, or we have a really bad bed bug infestation that we need help with. We really try to work with them together and then also with Scott County Health to try to see if we can get services. Sometimes people's houses are going down. It's more of a health department service they're needing, not really us. And once we can get them in there, we tend to try to hopefully fix the problem. And then Scott County Animal Control, as you know, we have, we're hand-in-hand with them. We've been having monthly meetings with them to make sure that progress is going. But Animal Control, any type of, we'll go inspect for chicken permits. And if they don't have one, Scott County Animal Control will actually come and take the chickens. Or barking dog issues, too many animals, those type of issues, we'll refer and work with Animal Control on those, but we don't handle those personally. Work plan updates. One, we passed, when we passed the new rental ordinance, vacant and abandoned property program. This spring, we were fortunate enough, Mallory had an intern with the city. We were able to take control of him for a little bit and had him go out and look at over 800 properties to figure out if they were vacant or not. We had a list between 600 and 800, which we thought were vacant or potentially vacant. We actually, after the survey, were down to 380 that looked vacant or unoccupied at the time. We have just started the process of sending out the notices on those that you have to be registered. And what we mean registered, we want to know who the property owner is, who is the direct person that we can call to say, hey, we need this work done. A lot of times with the vacant properties, we're unaware of them because their neighbors are maintaining the grass, are maintaining the trimming, raking the leaves. You wouldn't even know the property's vacant. So we did an in-depth survey of that and had that list. And now we're sending out the notices on those properties, letting them know they need to register them, just like a rental, to make sure we have a person of interest in that property that we can contact. And then the other, the other one would be our development services transition. And with moving planning out to the Public Works Building, it really is a hand-in-hand between our code enforcement officers, our front desk building guys, and then zoning. I see it every day. They're, they're working together. Tricia and Laura are constantly working with the code enforcement staff, the zoning staff, the building staff. On average, zoning right now is helping NSD with about 270 zoning cases. So when we get a call in, when somebody calls about a zoning issue, they're going to zoning for that determination on if it's okay or what they can do to fix it. So they are sort of the hand-in-hand working. It's really showing, just in the short time, that it'll be pretty effective in the future. And any questions?
Thank you. Alderman Peacock.
Thank you, Rich. I greatly appreciate the presentation. It's something I probably wasn't knowledgeable on, but great presentation nonetheless. Can you please talk about, and maybe I missed it, because I know you talked about people that are not permitted and catching those violers. But can you pretty, very briefly, talk about, I think you said, streamlining the process to put in a permit? Can you talk to that a little bit?
Yeah. So depending on what, what the project is, if it's a simple water heater or deck, you know, something small homeowner's doing, usually those people are coming into the counter and they're just working with our counter guys, making sure they understand the code and setbacks and stuff like that. On the bigger projects, they're actually submitting full plans through E-Plan. Our staff is then reviewing those plans and making sure they meet city code, fire code, whatever, you know, any, all of the codes they have to meet before construction is allowed to, the permits are allowed to be pulled. When we have somebody, we've, so let's say somebody starts a project without permits, we will issue stop work orders on those. Normally, the penalty for that is a double permit fee when they come in to pull the permit. If they continue to do work, we will issue civil citations on unpermitted work.
These inspectors, particularly, I guess, the ones you're considering hiring, what type of training are these individuals receiving? And is there a high turnover?
Sure. So when I came on board, we had four people retire. Since then, we've pretty been, we've been pretty, they stick around. They seem to, I guess they like me. I don't know. But our code, we'll start with code enforcement first. Our code enforcement guys, which would be your nuisance and your rental inspectors, they were never, they were trained on the job, strictly on the job. They weren't certified. Since coming on board, we've made them all certified in the housing code. So they are ICC certified inspectors now. And really what that's saying is when you get a code inspector come to your property or your rental unit, you're getting the same inspection. They've all been trained the same. They're all certified the same. They do CEUs, continued education, just, you know, follow with building code, changing trends. So they've all been certified. And then our plumbing inspectors, mechanical inspectors, those are usually retired trade workers. They also become certified through the ICC in their discipline. And they do their continuing ad, follow-up with building code practices and that.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Ambrose.
Thank you, Your Honor. Rich, your team's got a lot on the table. You know, the future of Davenport, more or less, lies in their hands, whether it's a new business coming in, new houses, you know, stabilizing our core neighborhoods. It's important that you made some incredible advances, but when you need more tools and more staff, let's not go through what we had for the last 25 years. Let's keep the momentum going forward. Let us know what you need because it's incredibly important to the city's future. So keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, I'd like to speak. This is Mary.
Yep, let me get, you'll be next. Alderman Lee's first, then you're on. So Alderman, Alderman Lee.
Okay, thank you. Very often when people get frustrated with their neighbors, they either call 911 or they call the police. How do 911 and the police department work with you to get those types of things taken care of appropriately?
Sure. I think a little bit to a question I asked earlier. I probably speak with Fire Marshal Morris and then also Lieutenant Smith with DPD on a daily basis. The Fire Marshal myself write a property today. So usually if their, their staff is going to a house or a property and they say, hey, this is more than a police issue or a fire issue, they need some code enforcement help here, they're sending us the reports, they're sending us pictures, anything they have to help us with those problems.
So there's close cooperation?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman McGuinness.
Thank you, Your Honor. Rich, I was really glad to hear you talk about the vacant property. I had that written down. When are we going to do the vacant property thing? Because that was something I think we passed two years ago. And I know you've been reforming your, your department that, in that time. So I'm excited to see where that goes. And that might be something, because we have a lot of aldermen, maybe not today, we have a lot of aldermen that weren't here when we passed that, that might be a good review at some point in the management update meeting or something, as to, in the way you went through the rental thing, I think. I'm not sure everybody on this council has seen that. But I did have another question for you. And that is, you know, we have some very good landlords in the city of Davenport, and we have some landlords that are consistent problems again and again and again and again. After one experience a few weeks ago, I did reach out to, to attorney, to Tom, and ask him, can we step up fees? Can we step up charges when it comes to repeat offenders or repeat properties? And he said that we could. You know, we, your inspectors in our city spend an inordinate amount of time on, and you know what I'm talking about, you know, on, you know, a handful of people's properties. Am I right about that? Would that be, would that about?
That would be accurate.
There's names here. Okay, all right. And so they're, they're taking an inordinate amount of time of our staff's time and our, you know, our residents' time. I think we ought to get reimbursed for that. And, and I think we, I just feel strongly that we should look at maybe an enhanced, okay, if you're taking as much of our time, then we're gonna, we will charge you more. I don't know what that looks like, but I, I think that, I think it's a problem that we need to address and perhaps would help at least to curb it a little bit, or at least compensate us for our time a little more. And maybe you could afford that other person.
Sure, sure. Well, not to cut you off, I would say we, so a couple of things we are doing that, that we haven't done in the past, on that note, is we are declaring more and more properties nuisance properties. So basically, what that does is allow us to go in right away and clean those up. We don't have to give a 10-day notice or any type of notice. We can just clean the property. Those fees significantly add up on those landlords, and we're seeing them sell their properties off. The other thing we started doing, and when we rewrote the rental code, we started pulling rental license. It was much harder to do in the past. It's a lot easier to do now. We have a couple of bad actors that we have pulled some of their rental license. Unfortunately, we have to do it property by property. So we just can't say, because you own 10 properties, we can pull all 10. But we have been pulling it. They've been seeing it. Or a couple of the property owners, what we do is we say, hey, listen, we've been into three of your properties. You own 50. We're going to go ahead and inspect all 50, even though they're not due. So we've been stepping that up. I will be honest with you, with COVID now, are, we need to, we're getting back on rental inspections. They've, you know, backlogged a little bit, but we're getting those caught back up. So we'll be seeing that.
And I will be coming back on that whole thing of vehicles being nuisance property. I haven't forgotten that. Now that, since this is almost over, I will be getting back into that with you as well. into that with you as well, what we can do there to maybe solve that problem.
I'm sure myself and Chief Sikorski will be more than happy to help.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman McGuinness. Alderman Doorman.
Thank you. I think you kind of touched on this one, but just in the process of issuing an abatement, what's the breakdown or how do you determine whether it's a go back and write a letter and mail it to them, put a sticker on their door while the person's there, or just an immediate response right then and there?
Sure. So if it's, if it's a public safety issue, we'll do an immediate cleanup. We'll issue an immediate cleanup. The way our, our grass ordinance is written, we publish the notice in the paper every May, and then we just automatically put it in for abatement. So we're not sending any letters. We have started putting courtesy stickers on doors, sort of two-fold for that. One for the resident knows, hey, we're coming to cut your grass, but also for the neighbors know, if they called in, staff's been there, they've looked at it. We also will post, we started, we redid our stickers, because it used to be grass stickers. We'll do that for debris now and put a ten-day notice has been sent. So we're trying to give that homeowner, skipping that mailing time, but we still give them a ten-day notice for like debris in their yard. If it's immediate, in the right of way, it's usually a twenty-four hour notice unless it's a public safety concern, like blocking a sidewalk or a handicap ramp or anything like that. Or if it's a significant pile of garbage that sometimes you see the neighbors start adding to, we'll do those as an immediate cleanup, too.
So then, kind of with that, I know a lot of the issues I've seen with frustrations, I guess you can say, with community members, with constituents, is that it, it's really just kind of a lack of like communication or not knowing that you guys know of an issue and are trying to work towards it. Is there a way where we can maybe increase the backstream communication? So, you know, if, if a neighbor does say, hey, my neighbor's property is out of control, they need to do something, well, by the time ten days comes, they're probably still mad because they don't see anything happening over in there. But if they could at least know, maybe that you guys know and you're working towards it, I feel like that might really help alleviate a lot of the problems that we see with the perception that you aren't doing anything, which I know isn't the case.
Sure. Yeah. First and foremost, for all of you, I'd encourage any of your constituents that call to reach out to our department to find out on a specific property, to touch base with myself, or I can get them in touch with the inspector in that area. We have tried to be better communicators on that, because in the past, it wasn't happening. The stickers are part of that. Moving forward, because usually if a resident can see that sticker or even seeing an orange sticker on a car, at least they know we've been there, and they're not like, hey, when are they gonna get there? So then usually that, that will stem the follow-up call from them, saying, hey, I see this sticker, but it's still not done. And then we can explain the process a little bit better to them.
And then I hear a lot also about just like the trash and recycling crews being eyes and ears for you. Can you just maybe talk on why that's not their job?
Sure.
Or how they work with that?
Yeah. I, I think, you know, as a city, you know, all our departments work in partnership with each other. And, you know, they're down every alley, down every street, you know, once a week. So they're, they're seeing stuff a little bit quicker than sometime one inspector in a, in a, in a ward. And they're able to let our guys know, hey, there might be a problem here, or, hey, we've noticed increased garbage from this property, and, you know, we've noticed a yard's going down. So we're able to, they're able to give a heads up on it. But also, a lot of calls, if a trash bin is overflowing or that, it's set out the night before. It's not going to be picked up, because if they pick it up, it's going to spread all over the alley. So giving them the opportunity to tag it right away, it starts that twenty-four hour clock that we can go then back there and get it cleaned up with the solid waste specialist crew that clean those things up. So we're not waiting for, believe it or not, the old process was very tedious and long. This is more direct. Starts the clock right away, and we can hopefully address those issues quicker.
And then my last question is dealing with our favorite F-word, fireworks. Is it possible that we could get your crew, get our ordinance to a point where your crew could deal with maybe the eight to five firework calls and they could issue the tickets? Or do we have to continue to have that be a police fire issue?
So we've talked internally with city attorney and the chiefs and Rich. They, we've talked hypothetically about that, but it is also a public safety call. And, and there may be the importance of having a trained officer to handle those calls, because they usually are not the most pleasant interactions we have. If you're, if you're lighting it off in a time when you're not supposed to anyway, putting our true civilians into that situation may not be ideal as a city. But we're looking at different ways to handle having eyes on the street versus the person actually writing the ticket and how to be a little more strategic and enforcing.
That's all I have. Thanks, Rich. I think you might be my most frequent fire contact in the city. So I appreciate it.
Thank you. Alderman Doorman.
I think you're close to me. But Rich, I just want to say thank you. As somebody who uses your services an awful lot, it seems like we talk on the phone every day. And I know we constantly are chasing around junk vehicles, abandoned vehicles, unlicensed vehicles. It just seems like it just, we never get a handle on it. And I know, I know you're working hard to do it, but it just, you know, that's one of my biggest complaints that I hear is, is the junk vehicles. And quite honestly, I think there's more vehicles out there without license plates and registrations than there are that have them. So just thank you for everything you do.
Thank you. I know fortunately, we are adding one more staff member who's Code One, and they'll be able to address some of that smaller nuisance stuff, like vehicles now. We'll be able to split the city in half. So I currently have a Code One. We're getting a new one. So hopefully, we'll see better response on that and getting those cars ticketed and at least tracked.
Thank you. Alderman Jobson.
A quick question about something that Alderman Doorman brought up in regards to communication and maybe avoiding frustrations. Is there a way in which we can continue to optimize the Cartograph system, you know, not only as a reporting method, but for, you know, maybe residents to check? So, hey, you know, there is that, you know, house at sixteen hundred Pennsylvania Avenue that just isn't keeping up with their, their weeds. And so I can search on there and, oh, yep, there's something, there's something already going on there. There's action items coming. You know, we can look that maybe your department said, all right, we, we got a ten-day notice. They can reference those dates so that we don't have that inundation of calls, et cetera, et cetera.
So Cartograph, on their online app, the YourGov, is actually, they are in the process of no longer supporting it. So right now, we're in the process. So it will continue working, but as people update their apps, it's going to stop working eventually sometime in the next six to twelve months. So right now, we're going to be transitioning to, it's gonna still work seamlessly with Cartograph, but it's called See Click Fix. And that's one of the benefits of it. They're telling us that there is more of that. Like if we put a note in, it's more forward-facing back to the resident. We haven't seen it yet. We're expecting our kickoff meeting is actually tomorrow. And then once we have that kickoff meeting, we should have a timeline. And then we'll be reaching out directly to those who have the YourGov accounts, telling them that it'll still work. On your phone, though, at some point, it will stop working. So we're going to try to proactively get people to switch before it stops working. But we'll have a better timeline and some of the increased functionality of that information here for you within the next month.
Thanks. That'd be great.
Alderman Doorman, second.
A quick follow-up to that. Do we ever publicly communicate YourGov? Because there's so many times I deal with people and I literally just put it on YourGov, and you guys deal with it the exact same way they could have?
Yeah, we do. We have it lately, because we knew we were going to switch. We found out like two months ago. So we will pick that back up once we get the See Click Fix thing going. But since we went live, I would say we get around ten thousand input a year by residents, which I think is pretty great.
Perfect. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. So Rich, I'll just say thank you. One thing that I've seen over the last decade, and I'll congratulate Ms. Spiegel, Ms. Gleason, and yourself. Probably no other place has been pushed, or, or, or subject has been pushed more than this rental nuisance neighborhood thing. And it's, I've watched it evolve quite well over the time. We still have work to do. The one push I continue to push with you, as I think others have mentioned, is the pattern people. I get your kindness and your courtesy to people who you're dealing with for the first or second time, but those pattern folks that you constantly deal with, I support, Alderman McGuinness or anybody, we need to do something for the pattern, serious pattern people much more strongly. You have improved hugely. I appreciate that. I thank you for that. And I thank all of you for the work that you've done in proving this. But we still have those few pattern folks that cost so much of your time. I'd love to see more information or things that we can do for you. So thank you very much. Ms. Spiegel, our last one then, please.
Hi. Thank you for having me. I'll, I'll try to be quick and go through our, a few slides here quick. My, so if you haven't met me, my name's Bruce. Julie Graham used to work with the Public Works Department and still does, actually. So she splits time, I think she's splitting time with a few departments, actually. So she's, she's pretty great, really a Cartograph expert, speaking of Cartograph. And so a lot of what we do, if you come up and deal with us, you, you might have already met her. So we have three primary areas that I'm going to focus on here for you. Suzanne Knutson is our Economic Development Manager. She actually started with us as our abandoned housing coordinator some years ago, and then transitioned over to Economic Development. Letty Goslosky, our Revitalization Supervisor, is actually pretty new. She was with the schools, Davenport Community School District, for a number of years, working in HR there. And she's been with us now for a couple of years. And so you probably remember her from Dream Program, but she's supervising our housing rehab effort. And then Destiny Gearhart is our Housing Program Manager, so down at the Heritage. You may not have seen as much of her since kind of in that satellite office, but, but she was with Finance Department, I think, for several years before transitioning over there. So not going to spend a ton of time on this slide, perhaps just draw your attention to, it's probably the biggest thing, the Supplies and Services line item. Really, what that basically is, is we do, as you might imagine, a lot of assistance programs. And so several millions of dollars of HUD funding really make up the brunt of that, as well as Dream Funding is, is in that mix as well. And then in terms of personnel, it's already been previously mentioned, probably that, just that little dip there here in FY21 is three planners that transitioned out to Public Works. So that's, that's, I just make sure you're aware where that number's coming from. So those are three areas. Business Development Assistance, and most of these areas, I think you, you all are probably fairly aware of, but I'll hit on some highlights. With regard to business development, we have a number of programs that we work through. Those acronym, that alphabet soup, Small Business Loan Program has been very active. That's something we did a few years ago. With HUD Funding, it's to create jobs. Actually, during COVID, we've been, we've, we've put pause on that. And now with the CDBG funding coming through, we're starting to do the resiliency, the small business resiliency. But starting in January, our anticipation is we will start up again with the Small Business Loan Program for job creation. URTE is the Tax Exemption Program. Most of you are aware of that. It's in several areas of the city. And it's actually one of our more popular ones. We do anywhere from eighty to a hundred projects a year, which you see in February when they come forward. And that helps businesses as well as down in the housing rehab area as well. We don't do lots of TIF projects. We like to pride ourselves on being a fairly conservative community in terms of using TIF dollars. But it, it is a great tool. And so some of you maybe haven't, we haven't worked through a TIF project yet, if you're new or on council. But, but it is a great tool that can help us with the attraction side, which I'll touch on a bit later. Primary thing I want to touch on, and this actually dribbles into the housing rehab area as well, a lot of what we do in our department focuses on this technical assistance aspect. I mean, sometimes it's strategic advisor, sometimes it's a little bit of emotional support about, somebody has a project idea, and where do I go, and how do I even start? You know, I, it, not to sound too soft with it, but I mean, a lot of times, it just depends. People come in the door from lots of different avenues with lots of different project ideas, from big and small and everywhere in between. So we spend some time with that. Transition into housing rehab quick. So in addition to doing that technical assistance on that side, everything from big projects to small, some of the programs you've heard of, obviously Dream, we're very appreciative. That's something that not every city puts non-HUD funding into housing. It's, HUD Funding is fairly commonplace. There are a lot of home, home and CDBG entitlement communities that, that do great things with home dollars, as, as I think we have. But kudos to, to you all for putting additional funding to it. Urban Homestead is our flagship that is, is really a homeownership program, but it basically takes that abandoned house and fixes it up and, and then we sell it to low to moderate income home buyer. And then the Owner Occupied Rehab Program, we sort of call that our, our basket program. In essence, I mean, the, we do things, we do the ramp program. So if you know someone who is coming out of care and, and needs a wheelchair ramp or needs accessibility, we, we roll them into that program. We, we do some home buyer, low to moderate income home buyer programs as well, outside of the Dream as well. So, so a lot of, a lot of good things in that basket of core service. And then the final area, rental assistance. Obviously, we've been talking as of late a little bit about the Heritage and about scattered site properties. Even if we move forward with the sale of both of those, the lion's share of what we do down there is still Section Eight. We have over seven hundred vouchers between Section Eight and BASH, and we're exploring some new ones as well. So that, that's a key program. And some of you have asked, you know, how, how do we get more of that? Or, you know, how does that program work? It is a very complicated program. There's a long waiting list. It does take a long time for people to work through that. We'll talk about that here in a minute. But, but it's a, it, it's, it's something that I think there's a huge need for, and it's only increasing. So, so frequently asked questions. Is there funding assistance available for X? This is that, that counselor role that sometimes we play. Generally, there, outside of city funding, there are a lot of state projects, state program funding, and federal sources that they might approach. And Alderman McGuinness is well aware, housing tax credits is one of those from the rehab side, the historic rehab, a lot of programs at the state, and they change those, they add those from time to time. So not that we're the experts in everything, but we, we are kind of that one-stop-shop for people to come to us and say, here's what I'd like to do. How can I get there? So why are there income requirements for your programs? Most of you probably know it's HUD Funding. The Congress, when they passed Home and CDBG and, and Section Eight, all of those programs have different income limits. And with the basic idea that we're not using taxpayer dollars from whatever level of government to assist folks who, who maybe could or should be able to do that on their own. So I mean, that's sort of why, I guess, that those limits exist. The hard part is, they often exist arbitrarily, and they're set there, and that just is what it is. We have to count these sorts of things, and we don't have to count these things. And so that, that is a point of frustration, I know, for some folks. But we try to help educate people as we go through it. So. Why can't we get a Trader Joe's here? You could actually probably fill in any business or other businesses in that blank, too. But really, the, the short answer is, it comes down to those folks in today, and really for the last ten to fifteen years, have, they, they're very sophisticated in making their own business decisions, and they don't go where they won't be successful. So they, they know what they're looking for. And then what we also find is, even in their own criteria that they look at, which can include things like how many, they, they want to know the sale price of homes within a half mile, or they want to know the highest level of educational attainment in an area and have, you know, they have a whole litany of, of criteria they'll look for. But even beyond that, they may only be able to grow ten cities a year, or they may have a state or a region that they're looking at. So as a result, we, we don't focus a lot of our efforts on those sorts of things, because our, our thought is, we, we're seeing small business growth in other ways. And when these folks are ready to come, there are some small things we can do. And I think a lot of folks have seen that out on Facebook pages and those things. Those are fine to do as well. But we don't spend a lot of city staff time chasing all of that. We're here when they're ready. And when they're ready to start talking, we can help them with all kinds of things, from zoning questions and, and code questions and all those sorts of things. So. And then why is there such a long waitlist for voucher assistance? This is not uncommon across the US. There just isn't enough funding to, to help all of those in most communities with how low income, how many low-income folks might be in that area. So it, it just takes a while. Then we, we have roughly, with seven hundred vouchers, we have roughly a hundred folks or so that go off the program, I would say. And that might be for them increasing And that might be for them increasing in income. It may be from them passing. It could be a whole host of things. Sometimes they have violations with the program and are not able to stay on the program. And then we have folks who poured in from other cities. And some of you have asked those questions before. You know, you can't really prevent that. That is a good thing in essence, that people can take their voucher and move in to other communities where there are jobs. But as a result, it kind of speaks to this question, which is that we don't pull, we probably pull 80 folks or so off the waiting list in any given year. So it just takes a while to go through. So partnerships. Like Rich mentioned, there, we have both internal and external ones. I think these are some of our external folks. So Chamber of Commerce, they do a lot of the external marketing. So back to folks who aren't in our area, businesses who aren't in our area and are thinking about moving their business here. Really, we rely on the Chamber as kind of the regional body to help with that. The state also does that. It's not that we don't, they can come to our website as well. And this, people can really find out about communities and do their own research and come at you from a lot of different ways. But the Chamber of Commerce does spend probably more staff time than anybody on this particular external marketing component. Private contractors are key for us, especially in our rehab division. A lot of homeowners maybe don't know who to call to try to get a project done. And so it's great to have a good relationship with folks. We're always trying to get more. So if you know folks that are thinking about getting into that line of business, or if you know some good folks, always refer them on. It's a lot of paperwork with the federal requirements. So that's sometimes the challenge we have in getting folks who want to jump through all those hoops to be eligible. Site selectors, this we talked about a little bit earlier, those are folks, brokers and folks that call us. They, they are hired by firms to find the next location for their business, the next place to expand into. And so we coordinate with those folks a lot. And then lastly, land and property owners. Without them, I mean, those are the folks who really are doing projects. We, you know, the, the city doesn't have a crew that, that does rehab work. The city doesn't have a crew that's building a business, right? I mean, these, these are the folks that are doing the work. They're just coming to us for some assistance in how they might go about doing that. So those are key partnerships. And then I would just mention too, real quick, on other partnerships, we do partner with, with Public Works a lot. This, this transition with Department Development and Neighborhood Services is huge. It's been great to be able to coordinate with, you know, and Laura's background and knowing about Economic Development has been awesome. And I know it's just early on so far, but it's been a good relationship so far with that. As well as with Fire Department, they've been great to come in and we have a big project and they want to get a read on how we work. It's setting up those meetings to sit down and figure out the best way to move forward. So. So anyway, last slide, work, work plan updates, North Park redevelopment strategy. This is something that Mesa Rich, the owner, has been talking with us for some time on. I think the talks are still going. We are planning a, and this kind of goes with commercial corridor too, but we do have a meeting coming up in a couple of weeks in that mid Brady area. So we're going to start some more conversations in that regard. So we'll keep you all in the loop on that. I'll jump down to Craft. That is now supposed to be done. I think they extended the deadline out, but they are supposed to be done by early June, I believe it is, is their deadline. And our expectation is probably the building will be down before that, but they have some remediation work once the structure is down. And so talking about where we go from that is going to become more and more important. Davenport Dream. So you see there that we, we just awarded some, the, the second round, Dream 2.0. And, and excited, there, a lot of the projects for Dream 1.0 are about done now. And Sarah, I know, is going to talk more about that tomorrow, I guess, a little bit too. So I, I won't bore you more with that. So I think that's, I think that's it, maybe. Any questions?
Um, I just, this is Marion, Mayor Manson, I'd like to ask a question.
Please, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I, one of the things, and I know your department has changed somewhat and your focus is certainly, you're from housing, but also economic development. But one of the things, and maybe it's just me being, you know, ignorant, but the number of, it seems to me like Kessler's closed, you know, at Myrtle and Wester. I didn't even know it had closed. Carl Cleve is closed. I went by, and it's in my neighborhood, and I'm just not getting out as much. And, and it was, I was shocked. Those are sort of legacy businesses. I, you know, part of what brings to mind for me is, you know, another big, I won't say which one, that we almost lost to the city and we didn't even, I don't think we even knew it a few years ago. It didn't happen. But I guess I'm wondering, in, in this environment, as we start up, the city economy starts up again, if there's anything we can do, and it's not that you don't do it, but we don't really have a program for it, that can help local businesses. We always talk about local businesses and how important they are. And those small, you know, mom and pop businesses, I know we have the COVID recovery. But again, it's like you have up to 51 employees. I'm not really sure that helps, how that helps the single proprietor. I've often heard through the whole COVID thing, our programs don't help single proprietors because they're not paying big staff. But I guess that we continue to work on long-term, something that is really protecting or helping to encourage those local, small local businesses that sort of animate our old, and you know what I'm talking about, Bruce, I know, those old commercial corridors, Washington Street, you know, the Hilltop, which right now has had a lot of turnover and I think is pretty empty right now because with COVID, it's very hard to start something up. So I, I wish we could look at some sort of a program that lives past COVID. And maybe it's federal dollars, you know, maybe, who knows, there'll be, there'll be more economic recovery things. But where we're looking at doing that, and particularly to help our older neighborhoods. So that's just a thought.
Ms. Dorman.
Hey Marion, it's Corey. So part of that ties directly into a little bit of the department realignments that both Rich and Bruce have talked about. So we, we put the regulatory side out at Public Works where the regulators live. And as Bruce and I have talked about, kind of this redefining role of community and economic development, they should really be the most beloved department. They get to innovate. They get to help people's dreams come true, whether it's fixing up an old home or starting a small business. And I think that's one of the things we've started to talk about is innovation in those program areas. Because I think we are all bureaucrats at some level and what we build, we become very comfortable with, right? But the world around us changed drastically this year. And I think you see, and we'll talk about it tomorrow, the, the changes we made with Dream because we learned some things. As we roll out of our CARES money and back into Small Business Loan Programs, business is going to fundamentally be different. One of the things we talked about, even for our local small businesses, the merchants, the retailers, the restaurateurs, is the ability to become much more savvy in a digital world if I can't eat in your place, right? How, how do you transact with customers and creating innovation with technology to reach customers in a different way? And, and that's really where I see the greatest opportunity with Bruce's department. And its new role is, is innovating and helping our, our residents and our small businesses really thrive.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Peacock.
Thank you, Bruce. I have two questions. So you mentioned a decrease in personnel. Can, looking to fiscal year 21, do you think that you're going to need more personnel going forward with your, with your mission?
Yeah, no, I mean, I think, I think where we're at, and as Corey just, just mentioned too, I think some of it is realigning the products we have. I honestly do think, unless we end up going down a path that, you know, is even more staff intensive, I think we can handle rolling out products. I think the bigger challenge, you know, for us, you know, kind of what's the challenge for CNEV going forward is, is to make sure that those, those assistance products and the way we're assisting and the types of businesses that we're able to assist aligns with what the needs are. And for a number of years, I think we've done fairly well with that. I think we've seen a lot of growth in our community. I think things have worked well. We've, we've retained folks. But we can always get better anyway. And on top of it, now the whole world has changed. And so from our end, I don't believe that's going to take more staff. I think it's going to take a little bit more analysis of figuring out, you know, how can we make the, the funding that we have available and the tools that we have available work for, for what we see coming in the next two, three years?
The second question is pretty much a, a reoccurring observation and some comments from certain community members, particularly when it comes to special projects, Dream Project. And you've probably heard me say this before. And I think even Corey, speaking of, probably talked to this guy. I always said is that we need to change our narrative on how the city works. And they were always saying, well, Pat, I think that the city has programs for certain individuals. And I was questioning when he said that, well, I don't see people like me getting or receiving these grants, these monies like that. That's clearly in your purview. How can we address this issue? And how can we say, no, these programs are for you? And, you know, maybe, I know, I heard you talking about the income gap. But I'm not talking about the income cap. I'm talking about, you know, how can we address those, that notion, that narrative that these programs are not for everybody?
Well, good question. I, I think it may be several things. I think part of it is that realigning and making, you know, maybe it's tweaking that, you know, what that, that audience is. So, for so long, and I think it's still a rule for most of the federal programs, it is, as you mentioned, it is tied to income. Some of our programs are tied to geography. So you have to be in a certain, you know, a zone that's been designated by, by the city to, to be able to get assistance, you know? We do have, you know, URT fits into that model, Dream fits into that model. And those are hard ones. I mean, those are hard, those are tougher things that are tougher to overcome. But I think some of the proactive side that we're starting in, and we didn't talk about it a lot tonight, but we've actually started, I think we've made some great progress with it. Nevada Lemke on staff has really been doing a lot more proactive marketing of our department and we need to do even more. But I think the more we get word out through social media platforms and other, other means of advertising programs, rather than having something just on the website or somebody hearing about it from a friend, I think the more we, we use new methods of trying to reach out to folks and spread that word, I think is probably our best path to be able to make sure that folks know what's available and how they can go after it. Other than that, it's, and Chief mentioned this too, it's trust, you know, too. I think they, sometimes I think people feel like they're not going to get assistance and so they don't even bother trying, you know? Or they've heard about someone who didn't get assistance and figure that it's not going to work for them. And hopefully we can work to gain that trust to say, no, give us a shot, you know, give, give it a try. This might work. Urban Homestead, we routinely have, I think, and staff can correct me on this, but I think we roughly have maybe five to six real serious apps and two that actually make it through all the hurdles for two houses that we have. I mean, we have two solid applications for two houses in our city. I know there are more people out there that could, could go after that program, but, but we don't see great numbers of apps always. So, so yeah, I'm, I'm not sure I have all the answers for it, but, but I think proactive marketing is going to be a piece of that.
Thank you. Alderman Dorman.
Thank you. Now, real quick, Bruce, when we talk about commercial quarters, let's not forget about Rockingham on the west side of Davenport. And if you truly can make dreams come true, I've been up here dreaming for a long time, so make it happen. Thanks.
Yes, duly noted, duly noted.
Dreams come true. October 17. Alderman Dorman.
Thank you. I got a question today and it's great timing to ask, so but in terms of CDBG funds and specifically the economic development aspect of it, a lot of those funds, it seems like, haven't been used in the past. And why is that? And how can we use those funds in our community?
Sure. So what Alderman Dorman's referring, that we, we have community development block grant funds for businesses that, when we do a number of small business loans, and those are in the order of, you know, $20,000, $40,000, depending. That was probably from an era where we would, there was a time period when the city used to do maybe a $300,000 loan or two in a given year and eat up those CDBG funds. What's happened is the, you have to create a certain number of low mod jobs and all the underwriting you have to go through. And it's, I think over the last several years, it's just become evident that folks, that, that's not the model anymore. That, you know, doing a, a half a million dollar CDBG loan just doesn't happen really that much. So I, I think that's a piece of it. I think it, and it's back to two, realigning and figuring out where our, I mean, I think we have some great products. I think small business is moving funding, but even that has federal hurdles that are tough. So there is a limit to how much you can modify with federal funding. And, and, you know, we are going to get to a point where, you know, we can do quite a few things, I think, differently. There are some things you can't change and we just need to figure out how best to restructure that. But, but I think we'll get there. I mean, it's, we, we have been moving money. We just, you know, it's, it's nice to have, when you do have those pots of funds available, it's nice to do, we're doing a facade. We were going, we kicked it off actually before COVID started and then we rolled it back in because we realized that wasn't, businesses weren't going to be looking for that. But we had an exterior facade program for businesses that I think we'll roll that out probably in the winter months so that people can do some projects in the spring with, with that. So I think, you know, I mean, there, I don't have the exact answer, but I think we're definitely open to ideas and working on it.
And then my next question, such statement, is I, I know that Corey, you showed your pyramid at the very beginning of what's our role and responsibility of local city government. But I really hate having my future and our future as a city dependent on other people. So whenever I see the structure of new jobs come to Davenport via the state or via the Chamber or almost, we get lucky. And I really absolutely hate that because I wouldn't hate to have my future be dependent on an aspect of luck. And I view the city the same way. So I, I really would like to see us, or I don't know if you guys already have the plans to find ways, and it sounds like we might have to get rid of the federal government aspect of it since they have so many restrictions, but to find the next round of jobs, find the technology jobs on the, the big end too. So the community defining jobs, but then also on your moderate end to really start backfilling all of those large buildings as we see them leave. I know Kyle Carter talked about how downtown has banquet office buildings. I know on the Hilltop, having great screens leave, a lot of these larger sized buildings that could be positioned nicely for a mid-sized business to really find a way to drive them into our community and step away from being lucky that the state will send them our way, not to Milwaukee or Urbandale or Cedar Rapids, the town I'm gunning after will be number two here shortly. So.
So I would touch on that a little bit. I don't, I don't know that we're lucky because we're planning your next industrial park, which none of us are going to be here the day it probably breaks ground, right? So I would say we're strategic, building out programs and, and being more refined. But part of what you're talking about is talent, attraction and entrepreneurship. And so as the Chamber realigned or as Q2030 rolls into its new organization or Visit Quad Cities under Dave Harrell is tackling bigger and better things, some of this placemaking stuff that we're partnering with our regional partners on matters. Site selectors are, are very meticulous people and it doesn't matter how nice you are. It is a black and white spreadsheet. You're an accountant. That's what they do. They are looking to exclude you, not include you. So who we are as a place, our community, our public safety, everything you've heard about, the fabric of our neighborhoods, our school system, it all matters if we're going to be good going forward.
Okay. Thank you. Alderman Conda.
Thank you. Quickly, codified was not in my vocabulary when I first got on council, but I'm codifying my remarks here for Rich and for Bruce. But I just wanted to thank you guys for having a culture of, of being a resource and how you guys want to see people succeed when they come in. For Rich, going to the building counter used to be like the DMV in some people's minds. And I think you're winning over some hearts and minds. And with Bruce, I've been out in my day job and many times, one of the first things that people think of is, well, we got to go talk to Bruce and figure out where our opportunities are here. So I appreciate you guys for all you do there. One thing that I've heard a couple of people talking about is finding a way to help monetize the URTE. I don't know if you've talked about that. But, not using TIF is probably good, but it does put the private sector at a little bit of a disadvantage as than there would be in other communities, because they can't lend against it always. So, if that, if that has any traction, or if that has any ability, that's something that I'd be excited to make possible.
Um, yeah, and I don't, you know, I don't know how much other folks are interested in this, so we could talk more about this later too, if you like. But, but, yeah, so I've had several conversations just recently with some folks and going back a couple of years. We, we have explored it. The challenge from the city's end, and where I think it's useful, so where you're basically talking about is having a, a developer who knows that they're qualifying for a tax exemption and would like to get a lender to provide a loan, let's say a million dollar loan, knowing that for the next 10 years, the, the exemption is going to somehow result in paying off that loan. Basically, the money gets deferred and monetized, so that there's a stream of payments to pay off that million dollar loan. And the challenge from the city's end is that, and the beauty of URTE is that we don't provide it, it's no exchange of funding, we just exempt the taxes from having to be paid. So, what I generally will tell folks who are looking to do that is, if you can privately work that scenario out, you're not having to pay that tax. So, if you can get, you just need, it's, it's essentially what is a loan agreement. Here's the reason why I think they're asking, is that they're not in first position. And so, I think generally, a, a first mortgage holder generally doesn't have that concern. It's generally when they're looking for a second mortgage to come in, and they're a little concerned about the collateral of whether their loan's going to get paid. But, we can talk more about that. I'm not saying that's the final be all, and, and Legal probably has some thoughts on it too. But, but, yeah, I understand the desire, and maybe there's a different way we can do it. Maybe it's not monetizing URTE, but maybe there's something else we can talk about with them, so, so, yeah.
Good. Anything else?
Okay, just a couple of comments from me then. Do you have something else?
I have one last site swipe. When that Facebook page to get Trader Joe's finally gets enough traction, like our friends with Portillo's did, let you be know, the Fifth Ward will graciously host it without any complaints then.
Sure, Trader Joe's might come here sometime, we'll see. Don't think it won't, so, I'll just throw that. All right, couple of comments. I appreciate a few years ago, your comments on TIF, but we used to not have a policy here, and we'd give away the farm and 95% for 20 years, and we don't do that anymore. We have a 60% ceiling, and we use it as a tool in a smart way, so thank you for keeping on that. And don't sell yourself short, Ms. Spiegel and your department and folks, the reason Sterilite is here is because of you, not because of anybody else. You guys went, Ms. Spiegel, went to Massachusetts and literally brought them here and negotiated that. So, the Craft Heinz, we saved 500 jobs and put up that massive facility because of y'all. That was a negotiation that you guys did. I remember being in the room as part of that, but you do a great job when you do that stuff. So, I'd encourage you to pay attention and, and continue to work that, because you're really, you know, when it comes to it, you're pretty damn good at it. And people around this region just kind of smile when some of these things happen, and when we bring these things for, you know, jobs here. There was nobody else outside of this room that did that, y'all did that. And I certainly remember. Then I also remember how we had Davenport Now in 2008, we had no houses, zero being built here, and we created that program. But then again, the council reestablished and readjusted, and now we, that's why we have the Dream Program, because we thought it was important, okay, the Dream, the Davenport Now built houses in our perimeter, and that was a wonderful thing, but then we needed something for the central city. So, advocacy by you guys and other people that are no longer on the council, and, and some that are on the council advocated for that. And then I'll always remember what you did a few years ago, when we literally put everything that required a business to start up in Davenport, and we used these walls to do that, and it took up three of these walls. And you reduced that by mostly none, right? And so, you do good work, keep it up, and I'd encourage you to do the same. And I thank you for all you do and whatever else we can do to help encourage and use our tools that we have, because the federal government's tools are, keeps decreasing. So, we need to be innovative in our own thinking, and you have a good team, so I appreciate that. So, if there's no other comments, Ms. Spiegel, do you have any final words? Anybody else? Thank you for attending.